Matt.
Oh, okay.
And we're four minutes out, but we-
Oh, there we are. I see Brian now and Matt. Hey, Matt, you look different than you did a half hour ago. Morgan, so we just need Diane.
Just need Diane and we've got a quorum. Well, actually, we've got a quorum now.
Yeah, we need Steve.
Randy.
They should be coming on. Hey, Andy?
Yes.
I'm just gonna ask you, the I've become so accustomed to reading the determination to hold electronic meeting statement. Do I do that in both of these meetings or do I need to just-
Yep. You'll have to both, Bob.
Okay, I've got that ready and I figured you were gonna say that, so I'll make sure that happens.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. And Morgan, I sent you a text or excuse me, an email. We didn't get the 20th of October minutes, so we'll go ahead and table those.
I'm communicating with her right now on the phone and she, we cannot hear for some reason, so she's trying to figure it out.
Okay. But can she hear us?
Yes.
That's-
Well, that's-
Hear me.
Isn't that a man's dream? They can say anything they want and the woman can't speak back?
You said the other way around, Dan.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, woo! I don't know what changed, but I'm happy. Okay, we are live on YouTube and I will go ahead and hit record as soon as you start the meeting for us, Mayor, so. And yes, you're correct. We did not ever get back to the minutes from October 20th, so we'll just table those for now.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. It looks like Diane's coming on. We're about ready. Give it less than a minute and we'll get started. There's Diane. Hey, we're getting close. We're getting close.
Going once.
Okay, here we go. I'd like to welcome everybody out. Appreciate you joining us. This is the Roy City Council Work Session for November 17th, 2020. It started at 4:30 PM. Let me just recognize the fact we have Councilmember Saxton, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Paul, and we've excused Councilmember Burrell. Okay, I'd like, if you don't mind, just read my opening statement in reference to electronic meetings. I will indicate to you, according to the record today, Roy has had 1,357 active cases or confirmed cases, and that has gone up 116 cases in the last five days as a result of the pandemic. I, Mayor Robert Dando, in accordance with Utah Code Section 52-3-207, four have determined that conducting a meeting in the Roy City Council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who would be present at the city council chamber. The basis of this determination is that due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus, there is not sufficient space in the city chambers or the council chambers provide appropriate safe physical distancing for the safety of the individuals who attend. Accordingly, the, on this date, November 17th, 2020, the meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location. Okay, with that, counsel, this is a work section. Our plan on this meeting is to basically discuss the proposed mixed-use downtown district document. I see we have Steve on board. He's gonna provide us some technical expertise, so if you, if you have questions. Since many of you, in fact, had submitted some comments and some recommendations, what I'd like to do is I'd like to begin with that and then we will walk through from council member to council member until we get to the the one-hour time period on this particular work job. So with that, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Wilson, we're gonna start with your first one. You're, you've asked for adding on, on page 13-1 applicability clause. Anne, would you kind of give us an idea what you're thinking about that particular request to add an application, applicability clause at the very beginning of our 13-1 document?
You're on mute.
Oh, we can't hear you.
Me too.
All right. So this is similar to, Mayor, what you had mentioned as well. And I believe that this is very important because after speaking with several members of the committee that reviewed this, their intent was to make sure we didn't cause problems or limit or not support the current businesses. We want them to be able to continue, to be able to grow as necessary. And so I believe that in saying it this way, it allows the uses and structure to be able to be continued and doesn't inhibit any newer future on them. And I don't know if, Andy, if you had a chance to look at that, if it sounded reasonable, but that's why, that's why I'm thinking it's very important, very critical.
Yeah, Diane, it's, I don't know that I've seen a statement like that before when you're leading into the code. So I would have to follow up on that for you and then it'd have to be something that everybody agreed on, too.
And would it be something that would be better to be maybe, instead of at the beginning of the code, maybe do it like at the end, you got a chapter 10 or something like that?
Yeah, and Steve's chomping at the bit here. Steve, why don't you go ahead?
Well, again, if it's for non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, the ordinance already has that in it. I mean, Title 10 is the land use ordinance, so if we're just putting in another chapter in the land use ordinance, we don't need to have another section or another portion of the code saying that they would be, you know, non-conforming or wouldn't have to abide by things. They're, they're already non-conforming. I mean, if we take Burger Bar, for example, they've been non-conforming since 1973. Haven't changed, haven't been required to change. Chapter 23 of the Title 10 has been that way for decades and hasn't had, you know, caused them any grief or heartache. So to, you know, to put in some, something in just chapter 13, and, you know, chapter 14 doesn't have it, which deals with design standards for commercial. Chapter 15 doesn't have it for design standards for commercial. I'm not sure why we'd need it in chapter 13, which would be diet, design standards for commercial.
I think the number one reason is because the, there are increased restrictions and limitations for, for chapter 13. And as I spoke with you, Steve, and I was trying to, you know, check with Andy and some other attorneys, when you take a look at that, chapter 23, it goes into uses and structure. It says the property owner has voluntarily demolished a majority of the non-compliant structure. That, so that's greater than 50%. But, but it doesn't address if they want to do an addition, because if they do an addition, as we had kind of discussed separately, then once they do an addition from that, then that means they now have to abide by chapter 5 regulations because that is now part of the code. And so, and if we can clarify it a different way, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that they're able to grow. We wanna support them. I want everybody to be on a level playing field. I don't want to allow new businesses to have opportunity that outweighs these businesses that have been solid, sustained us and have supported us. I want us to support and sustain them as well.
If I can, again, I mean, even if this was put in-
Yeah.
So they would have to conform to current standards, which, and you and I have had this debate before and I don't quite agree with what, how you mention it, but the current standards have a shorter list of allowable materials, have a more restrictive requirement for the number of offsets per length of wall, where the new code as written has a longer list of allowed materials and a longer area before you have to have separation. So if I was an existing business, I wouldn't wanna have to abide by the current code because I still have to abide by some code if I demolish my building or add on to my building.
Yeah, the proposed code is less restrictive and gives more options.
And I know Diane has commented, you know, the building types, entry, entrance types and roof types are restrictive, but I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what type of building doesn't fit in those six categories. I'm still trying to figure out what type of entrance doesn't fit into the three or four that we allow or what type of roof doesn't fit in the four or five that we allow.
And we could address that maybe at some other time, but, and, and if there's a way for us to, to make sure, it's just that as I was speaking with you, Steve, I didn't feel confident that that was going to allow the current business owners this opportunity. I, you know, as Joe mentioned, there are definitely some benefits from the chapter 1023, but as soon as you say, as soon as you say, what, what happens is if a code has more guidelines, more restrictions, then that means you have more areas for non-conformance. And that means then that if you make a change, and if we could just say, maybe we just don't wanna say demolished. What if we say, if a property owner voluntarily changes a majority greater than, you know, change is a majority, like, and I don't know if change is the right word, but I just wanna allow them to upgrade. I want them, allow them to, to change their, you know, whether it's their drive-through, whether, whatever it is, you know, if they wanna add on, if they wanna do something different. You know, as you mentioned, Steve, you know, some of this will be beneficial for them because if they want to go higher, maybe they could. I just don't want to, I just wanna keep that level playing field. And, and when we discussed it, I didn't, I did not appreciate that the 1023 allowed all of those options because of the increased, because of the increased restrictions and zoning documents, document requirements in code, in chapter 13. And maybe this is something that, you know, needs further investigation or, or something like that. But I definitely think it needs to be a little more clarified after our discussion with my discussion with Andy and discussion with, what, you know, you guys are, are key.
Yeah. Well, again, I'd kind of maybe reposed the question. Say they're exempt from the, this code and it gets adopted and they want to expand. They have to revert to which code? The current one? The one they were built to? Because, you know, in 20 years from now, if this is still the language that's in the ordinance, they may no longer have the old codes available that they're referring to. So it's either the entire, to me as a planner, the entire district has the same design standards or they don't. But even today, if Burger Bar wanted to expand, they have to abide by today's code for their expansion, which would be the same as this code, which is, as Joe had mentioned, allows for more.
Well, um-
But-
Boy, if we can actually really truly satisfy that it does allow more options, that's great. That's just the principle that I would like to allow for them because as I was trying to investigate it with people, you know, like I already mentioned, it didn't, it, it didn't ring true that that might be the case and we just, we need to support them. You know, this is a big change and we have some businesses that have been there for a long time and we wanna support and sustain them as well. So if there's a way that we can make sure that that's the case or clarify it, so those concerns, you know, maybe it's just a clarification of 1023. You know, I just think we need to make sure that we aren't inhibiting their options.
Okay. Well, the other, the other concern, maybe Andy can jump in as well, is chapter 23 is not on the docket to be changed. So even if everybody agrees, it still has to go back to the planning commission to be looked at. So chapter 23, with or without the adoption of, of chapter 13, still exists.
And that's why I was-
If the concerns are more with chapter 23, then that might need to be a different discussion and not about title or chapter 13.
So you're saying by putting in a clause that would just be applicable to chapter 13, that's not, that's not a possibility?
Well, 'cause-
I think you're saying it's a possibility, but just, that would have to go back to planning commission and, and we couldn't handle that with what we have in front of us at this time. Is that right, Steve?
Well, here's what, here's what I think Diane is asking. Diane is asking is, the first thing is the document we seen in February actually did have some type of legal non-conforming components in it. And, and it was suggested that it be removed and we turned back to the, the chapter 23 clause that deals with non-conforming. And, and, and we did just that. So we stripped literally everything out of it that deals with non-conforming and fall back on it. So I think the question Diane is asking is this. Do we want to put something inside of chapter 13 that focuses primarily on mixed use? And that is all, because it is mixed-use document. If the answer to that question is yes, then counsel, let's, let's have that conversation. I think what Steve is suggesting is, is probably not necessary. However, I think to satisfy Diane's point, she's saying this. She's saying is, she wants to make sure then that chapter 23, which deals with legal non-conforming structures or properties or whatever. She's saying is that we have got to take that one on and make sure, as part of this all this agreement, that we get the chapter 23 to be protective of those individuals who are already existing today under chapter 23.
So if we don't want chapter 23, let's amend chapter 23 and move this forward.
We can. And that's, I think what she's looking for is assurances then, because that's a whole different action. We'd have to approach that at the request of the city council. City council will then have to direct staff to go ahead, bring this back to the planning commission. Planning commission has to approach this in a separate discussion. It's a separate issue. And then run it through the, the gauntlet in terms of assessing and provide a recommendation back to the city council at some date. But, but if, if Diane, if your point is, I can, I can live with that as long as we can take the, the chapter 23 and make sure that the provisions you're talking about are found in there, then we can probably say, okay, then that's the agreement that council goes into this, this document. We will agree to support this document under the condition that says chapter 23 be revisited and some recommendations will be made to improve chapter 23. Did I understand what you're saying, Diane?
Yeah, as long as we can have an assurance that it meets those needs. You know, I've checked into other cities who have a dual code and other cities have done, what they do is an option, so you can have a mixed-use option so that allows the security and, and, you know, it keeps the current businesses encouraged to grow, encouraged to do the facelift, encouraged to keep updated, even though the traditional mixed use, the new mixed use may be prohibitive because of expense. So I just want to allow them that opportunity. So, yeah, if we can assure that in a different way, that's, that's my, my whole concern.
Counsel, any comments? Counsel, any comments about that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hey, I will take a look at that. I'll look at our current 1023 and see if somehow, if, if there's a problem or if it already covers it. So, and then I'll get back to you guys on that.
Yeah, I think, I think the piece that Steve was mentioning is, under this new document, there are some material requirements to add to it. There's some really clarity that's provided. And I think, I think I can agree with Steve is, under the chapter 13, it is actually better than, in my opinion, it's better document for businesses downtown, you know, what the current code says in this issue. So if we can bring some of that into the chapter 23, that'd be a perfect idea.
And, and that's been my understanding, too, when you look at that for percentages of the building being demolished. It's actually more in favor of the, how it's currently is versus what was proposed, so.
Yes, for the demolished, it is. So, yeah, Andy, if you don't mind, just check into those other aspects.
I'd be more than happy to.
All right. I appreciate that.
And just another clarification, we also gotta remember that the non-conforming chapter isn't just for commercial. It deals with the residential portion of, of the city. It deals with all aspects. So changing that changes the entire city's requirements, the dealing with non-conformities, not just downtown business district.
No, you're absolutely correct.
A comprehensive look, not just one area.
Yeah. Okay.
And this zone has several, you know, we've got a commercial in the mixed-use zone. We've got R2. We've got some R1A. So, so I think, yeah, it's definitely necessary. It needs to look at more than just commercial.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, here's what we got. Diane, you're up again. What you've asked is, is adding a statement in that talks about gasoline may be sold in any district. I assume you're referring to under vehicle service. Would you like to talk more about that?
Yes, in regards to mine, um, let me just grab mine. There is an addendum that was put into the code and my pages might be just a little bit different.
I can read what you've indicated. You were indicating your concern was, we are right off the freeway. Gasoline sales are very important to the citizens, businesses, visitors. The convenience is essential, allow economic, excuse me, the economic market to determine best location for success. And your recommendation then was to add gasoline may be sold in any district as today is conditional. And it's only allowed in the general. I think what you're proposing is you want it like in the, the Core A, Core B, or general.
That's correct. I believe that we should have that option available so the market can drive that and so a business can have an option. And so I, I just believe that that would be very helpful if we could just have that option.
Steve, go ahead.
Well, the, the reason why it was left out of Core A and Core B is your most important intersection of 56 and 19, which yes, is right off of the freeway. Do you want that to have four gas stations at your most precious corner? And the reason why it was done this way is, is no. But if someone's coming off the freeway to get gas and they happen to have to drive two or three blocks north or south, maybe they stop somewhere else other than the gas station and purchase something that, a restaurant or a convenience store or something that's there. So, I mean, if the council would like to have probably their best corner in gas stations, that could, you know, we can allow that. But that's the reason why it was not allowed in the Core A and Core Bs, because that one intersection is, is highly valued.
And that's the critical, that's the critical point right there, I think, council, we need to talk about. What Steve is saying is, you got, we got a choice. You can leave the four corners on 56 and 1900 to basically be as it is. However, I will indicate to you, there are two service stations at that location today. And so they stay legal, non-conforming until such time that there's some changes according to the dash 23. Or as Diane is suggesting is, she simply says, allow the market to decide where they should go. And, and that means opening that up to both the Core A, Core B, or anywhere in the general. What's your thoughts on that?
And may I just make another comment, because convenience stores, which is how this is under, they're allowed at any of those, in any of those districts. And so I think that if they're allowed at those districts, then having that option, you know, allowing the property owners that right could be, would be very important.
Okay. Comments? Counsel?
I personally feel we have enough gas stations for our needs, especially in that location. I wouldn't vote to change it.
Okay, Anne, your thoughts?
Well, Sinclair is already out of business, so we really only have common sense right there.
I understand. But here, what's, what Steve is indicating to you is, is that i-if you change the document, any business that basically wants to sell gas, that is the free market, according to Diane's comments, could come in and simply says where that Sinclair is, I wanna go ahead and put a service station. Anywhere that they want to and that, any, in fact, anywhere within the Core A, B, or general, they could put a service station if they want. Question is, are you okay with that?
I, I- Yeah, Brian?
I, I would, I would have concerns with having a gas station on all four corners there. I hate to infringe on people's property rights, but we're, we're actually looking to, to build the economics of Roy. And I just, I don't see that as a way to do it, you know. And if you guys can convince me otherwise and show me a gas station makes more than, you know, a car lot or, or a restaurant, then I'd take a look at it. But I, I have concerns.
Because we have four gas stations in Roy as it is. You know, down on by 4,000, 4,800, you know, then 5,600 and by the bowling alley. So I might personally, I'd rather see something on that corner where someone exits and sees maybe a restaurant or something else that they would take the exit for, because they can get common sense gas. I'd rather fill it myself with something rather than another gas station. That's just my opinion, so.
Okay. Now, remember, you're the policymakers, and so you make that decision. So Diane, here's what I do. It sounds like the majority of the council basically is not too supportive of the idea of changing it, but you bring up a good point. You wanna strengthen your argument or if you wanna look at the common sense piece of this and we protect a common sense business, ensure that they're not hampered by this at any point. And we do that through that, that chapter 23. So think about how you wanna approach this, but I'm gonna take this one saying is, the council seems to be at this point thinking is, is that we wanna have a little more control what goes on all these, these street, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Diane, you have another one? You indicated that you said you'd like to change the word wording from shall to should in easing the restrictions on drive-throughs.
Yes.
Could you go ahead and share your thoughts on that?
Yes, on page 1348 of my documents. It, I just believe that we should allow that sort of an option because we want to allow a business to be successful. And it's very difficult for businesses to be successful if that's their only place. Now, I do think that it was an improvement underneath. It says, however, planning commission may review and approve alternative designs. But I think that that could be very hampering and, I mean, you certainly could leave it. But I believe that it takes the concern right away if we just put shall to should or could. And then you still have the planning commission option, but I believe we're trying to encourage business and we should, that would help.
We agree on something.
Joe, yay! All right. Joe, yay. All right.
If you saw my email I sent about an hour ago, it stated pretty much just that. I didn't say should or shall. I said, get rid of it.
That's okay.
Because you look at, you look at your convenience stores, you look at your restaurants, uh, fast food. The drive-in on the side is, is the easiest access. It's going to be visible from nineteen hundred. I would not force that to be in the back. Might force parking to be in the back, but not the drive-through.
Right. The only thing that should be in the back is if it's a, like a medical center or rest home or senior center where it's safer to drop somebody off in the back, but not like a fast food restaurant. I mean, there are some in the back. Lauren's is in the back, down on Midland Drive and Habit Burger on Riverdale Road's in the back. But, uh,
It depends on what you call the back of Habit Burger.
Right. I know. It's on Riverdale Road.
Riverdale Road. I had that conversation with Steve earlier. I, I think we give them the latitude to be able to put the drive-through where it makes. Because the other thing, if you force them to the back, some of those parcels of property, you may isolate the ability to have a drive-through. And so I think open the drive-through up to side or rear locations makes the most sense. That's how
Right.
your fast food restaurants are built nowadays.
Right. I agree.
Brian, you have a comment?
Uh, just, I work at Chick-fil-A. Meaning their drive-up both front, back, side. And it's, it seems to work.
So I guess Steve, uh, Andy, Matt, uh, the recommendation would be is, uh, uh, make it more suggestive it should be, but don't be enforceive. Uh, she's acting, she's asking that we change the wording from shall to should. See if that will meet the requirement, allow some flexibility. Steve?
Look, I, I know Joe had kind of made a mention to just get rid of it. So is it change it from shall to should, or just get rid of it?
If we get rid of it, does that mean the option is available and now we don't have to worry about it?
Well, they just design their building however they want.
Okay.
That's what I would agree.
Right. I would get rid of it.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's just do that.
Sorry, I just wanted a little clarification because there was two different thoughts.
Yep.
Yep.
Great, great comment. Okay. Thanks, Steve. Hey Diane, one more, I believe, on your plate. Uh, if you would, you're indicating, uh, you'd like to add a commercial zone. I want to make sure I got the, uh, the right document here. You said, uh, by adding a commercial zone, three hundred feet both sides of nineteen hundred west from Riverdale Road South, I believe is, was your intent. And you'd like to discuss that just a little bit more?
I'd like to explore the idea. Um, I just got off the phone again with, um, Nika, who is on the Clearfield Planning Commission. And then I've got some calls into some of the other cities who have found that their commercial districts that they've allowed mixed use has been kind of overrun with the high density, even with the commercial bottom floor, that it took away the options for more destination, commercial buildings, I mean, commercial businesses. And so, I mean, I think it would take a little more investigation and I'm in that process of trying to get that data. But I believe the concept is we, we want to allow property owners to do what they want to grow. But as the mayor has mentioned, we've got to be so careful and protective. We're not going to create new commercial area. And so from what I've been able to tell, and like I said, this is preliminary, and I'd like us to discuss this, that maybe that front zone would be the best place to do that because of the, um, traffic, because the businesses like to have people driving by, because what they'll do is they'll say, oh, I see this, then they'll turn and, and they'll stop. Um, so that was my first thought. I do think it needs some, you know, more vetting, but I just feel we can't, once you get rid of commercial, you just can't get it back. And so the, the recommendation that she gave me was just be very protective of the area that you think realistically would be your best commercial area. There are some areas that are commercial that, you know, aren't very realistic and that, um, you know, a high-rise, high-density will be, will be fine there. Um, but, you know, because the high-density can support that commercial as well. So maybe we can have just a discussion on the pros and cons of, of not losing maybe a commercial only, maybe providing that.
Hey Steve? Go ahead. Steve?
Um, well, I have done some digging and spoke with the planning manager in Ogden. Uh, you had mentioned Ogden City is having a hard time, um, with it.
As per their articles in the paper.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I spoke to Greg Montgomery.
Okay.
Um, he actually has sent me the, the ordinance that they've done, but just a little synopsis of it is their issues were back in April, they just kind of did a pending regulation ordinance to stop people from building. It wasn't that they didn't want mixed use, or they didn't want multifamily. Is that they were finding the projects that were going through at the time, there were no design standards for apartments in the downtown. There were no landscaping requirements. There were no amenity requirements. There were no setback requirements. So they put a hold on everything. Um, in October, they approved the ordinance with design standards, uh, for colors, materials, requiring twenty percent landscaping outside of the setbacks. So the setbacks landscaping doesn't count towards that twenty percent. Um, and then they require, have a requirement for amenities either inside or outside. They left that option up to them. If they wanted a swimming pool inside, then they could have that as an amenity. Um, within that ordinance as well, anything less than four acres doesn't have a requirement at all for any commercial. It could all be just residential. Anything over four acres, twenty-five percent of that development has to be commercial. Now, there is a caveat. They said that they're within their city. This is citywide, not just downtown Ogden. So their, their mixed use is, is far beyond just twenty-fifth and Washington. Um, but they identified eight or let's see, two, four, six, eight intersections. I wrote seven of them down. Um, that if you're within, and I couldn't remember how far it was, three hundred, three hundred fifty feet of that intersection, then only thirty percent of the projects could be residential. But the, again, these are intersections from the north of Ogden to the south of Ogden, the west to the east. So five points is which is second north in Washington and wall. Thirtieth in Washington, thirty-sixth and wall, twelfth and wall, twelfth and Washington, twentieth and Harrison, thirty-sixth and Harrison, and Greg couldn't remember what the, the other one was. Now, if we did, as you kind of, well, when I talked to Brad McRack, the planner of Clearfield.
Uh huh.
Just a clarification, Nika is on the city council.
Yeah.
I was with her on the planning commission, but, uh, she graduated or whatever you want to call that to the, the council. Um, within their form-based code, which was adopted in twenty eighteen, they did make some changes. And February of twenty twenty was in regards to commercial. Um, so eight hundred north to three hundred north was commercial only all the time. Has, wasn't changed, has always been that. Um, from three hundred north to seven hundred south, it's mixed use. And seven hundred south to one thousand south on the west side is mixed use. But that includes their cemetery and their front runner station. Then on a thousand, uh, on seven hundred south, which is their exit off the freeway to State Street, is where they changed it from allowing mixed use to a commercial only zone. And from his expression, eh, e- explanation, sorry. Um, there was only about twenty, twenty-five parcels affected and they're about a hundred, a hundred fifty feet deep. They're not buried deep. So they felt it wasn't prudent to have multifamily and commercial on those properties that weren't big enough. So that was what the, the changes were. But they have increased, so to speak, their, the area or amount of mixed use. Now, unheard, I, I can take comments now or keep going.
Go ahead. Council, what's your thoughts on, uh, this idea?
I say leave it the way it is. Uh, you take three hundred feet on the west side, you've wiped out everything, the whole depth of the lot. Um, you know, the only place you're really going to produce mixed use, uh, per se, is on the east side of nineteen hundred. Um, right now, all that is commercial and we're not getting development. So we've got to do something to promote some development. So my votes, leave it the way it is.
Uh, Anne, you have a comment on this?
Yeah, I think that we need development on the east side also. I think we need the mixed use. I think we need housing with all the building going on at Hillfield. I think with housing, we'll get restaurants, we'll get businesses, and it all has to start with housing.
Okay. Brian, you have a comment?
Well, um, um, I can't believe I'm in this. I actually, I, I agree with, with Joe that you're going to take out a lot of, of, uh, property with that three hundred foot swath. But that being said, uh, as an alternative to what Diane would like, why, why can't we, and I talked to Randy Sant today about this. But can't, can't we determine what, what a developer puts in when it comes to retail, meaning making half, at least half of the new what commercial um, for retail?
I think we do, just like we did on the four thousand and Midland Drive, Brian. We dictated that they backed down the number of housing units and increased the number of commercial. I, I think you can do the same thing there. You can also do the same thing to say, if you're putting in a five-story building, your first level's commercial. Maybe your second level is affordable housing, and then your higher levels become higher housing. That way you can get in some affordable housing. I, I think we have the ability to do that.
If, if I could maybe add, uh, to that comment, um, I think there's probably a number of ways you could make sure that you get, uh, proper commercial development in any kind of a mixed use. Um, one of the things to keep in mind is that most of these developers that will be developed in this area are most likely going to approach this for uh, probably some, some incentives. And if they do, then we will enter into what's called a tax increment participation agreement. And we can require within that agreement that there be so much commercial for every foot of residential that we might approve. Uh, there can also be, uh, uh, a requirement that, uh, uh, again, we'd look at the base year, uh, of what is the revenue that we're currently getting off of that property that the developer wish, wishes to develop. And we can always put in the agreement that we'd like to see equal or more revenue. So the bottom line is that the city's not losing revenue, but gaining revenue. And also that we're getting into the development things that are being replaced. So if, if a development is replacing we could require that development to add additional commercial to it. And, uh, that can be, if we want to, we can specifically say it needs to be retail, not office. So I think that's one way that we can, we can address, uh, the potential loss of any commercial development that might occur with a mixed use development.
Okay. Thanks, Randy. I see Steve, you got a map up. You want to share your thoughts with us on that?
This is just the, the three hundred feet each direction off of nineteen hundred west is in orange. So when you look at it, it, it pretty much wipes out most places on the west side for any type of mixed use. And then on the east side, where my little, I don't know if you can see my mouse with the little
Yeah, yeah.
That's Harman's. So three hundred feet almost gets you the front door of Harman's on the east side. So you're left with a very small area to develop mixed use. I mean, I don't necessarily mind the thought.
Yeah.
I wanted to kind of look at that of kind of how Ogden had put it, saying, okay, let's make fifty-six hundred south and nineteen hundred west are corner and say three hundred feet each direction of that. You won't have, this is commercial only. I, I think that is feasible, um, kind of in that same thought where
I like that, Steve.
I like that too.
Either way, then you could have the mixed use type of stuff. Cause again, your, your prime corner is that, is that corner.
Because, you know, that's what Clearfield did. They had three specific nodes. I mean, I was just putting out a suggestion, maybe three hundred foot. Isn't right. And I have my map. I was trying to measure it, maybe a hundred fifty feet or, or whatever. But the thing that she said was so reassuring to them is that commercials hard to come by right now. But you hate to think that there's a really important commercial area that you now just didn't allow to be developed. I mean, you let something else go in that spot and once it's, you know, gone, once it's got high-rise density, you'll never really get it back. And so maybe we just need to pick a few places that we do that. You know, maybe, I, I was just exploring an idea because like I said, I'm still in the process of research and Steve, you already know those numbers and and I don't have to reinvent it.
I like Steve's recommendation of three hundred foot of each direction of fifty-six hundred and nineteen.
Or even if it's not three hundred, maybe it's even two hundred. I mean, I don't want all residential. I want commercial. I don't want nineteen hundred to be all apartments and condos. I don't like commercial and
Lots that mixed use, commercial, residential sense along that corridor.
Well, let's do this then. Uh, Diane, obviously Steve's brought up some interesting points here. Uh, your idea may still have a lot of traction if it can be structured a little bit differently. Why don't you take the time, finish your research? Go to Steve, maybe between the two of you, you can look at something that might be reasonable. But I will tell you this. If you went south on fifty-six and you start to get down closer to the border goes into sunset, you're going to look on the east side and you're going to see a very narrow strip of properties through there. To be very honest with you, in my opinion, uh, most of that I doubt will ever be able to do any type of reasonable mixed use development. It may very well be perfect. It simply says that's a corridor. We're going to keep simply, uh, uh, commercial all the way down that line. So look at the options. Steve, you had another comment?
Well, uh, you, you may, you bring up a good point because some of the geographic of, and size of these lots may already do it itself without having to insulate or in- institute something different. But also the west side of Roy, which is already community commercial, allows for just commercial. So we already have those zones, um, that Clearfield doesn't. They revamped their entire commercial corridors to have, to be form-based codes. So that's why they kind of left some of those commercial only zones where we have community, commercial, business park, manufacturing elsewhere. And again, Ogden did it throughout the city on, on, on their mixed use. So, you know, there are things, I think we have in some ways better ability for commercial, you know, to say, okay, you know, downtown may be only mixed use, but everywhere else is only commercial and we won't change that. Or we come, you know, we say, okay, we'll change the community commercials, allow mixed use, but increase the number of intersections, you know, like thirty-five and, and fifty-six is another prime intersection or forty-eight and thirty-five, or, you know, those type of things where twenty years from now it may change. So I, yeah, I'd be happy to meet with Diane and kind of explore that option of that thought.
Perfect. Okay, Diane, if you'll do that, I think that gives us at least the, we can look at that thing one more when you finish your research. Brian, I got one more. I think we can get in between now. I just want to pick any yours. Uh, I'll just pick one that I think we can try to work through. You said in, uh, in your packet, you says, we need to eliminate a floor level. Uh, can you kind of give us an idea of what you're thinking with that comment?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that there is some kind of of compromise in the floor levels that we're proposing. And I know, I know that there's been a lot of work poured into this. But it would be so nice to be able to go back to the very people I share fence with and tell them, hey, I, I did what I could and you know, so if, if we could look at it, I know you guys have looked at it. But I'm asking if you'll look at it again. And I'm talking mostly the height of the, of the 80-foot building.
Okay, so because not, not knowing what you were thinking here, it's what I think I got out of what your statement was. Uh, move from 80 feet to 70 feet in Core A, 60 feet to 50 feet in Core B, and 40 feet to 30 feet in Core in the general. Is that what you're saying? Or are you only focused on Core A?
Well, I'm mostly, mostly focused on the on the larger buildings.
Okay, so so the height of 80 feet in Core A, you're, you're recommending to drop that from 80 feet down to?
70.
Okay. Council, any comments, questions about that?
Keep your comments clean.
Okay, I, I'll just mention some of the feedback that I've received. Um, I've found that the businesses and property owners and citizens that live in Roy are requesting um, lower, they're saying two to three stories or maybe five stories at the max. If you've got a property owner or a business owner that doesn't live in Roy, they don't seem to be as, they're not as impacted by it. So what happens is that there's a financial portion to it. There's also a lifestyle portion to it. And so, uh, that's I think where the, the balance comes in. If we take a look at the focus Roy document, you know, um, one of the most important parts of that, it says 5% of the citizens were okay with urban, urban apartments. They, they didn't want the other. And then when they said they were going to allow it, you know, on page 30, it says two to three stories. They were okay with two to three stories of, of development downtown. So I think that's where the difference comes in. You've got people, people who are living here who are impacted by it. Some of those are property owners. Even the property owners who know that that could give them a higher financial reward are still wanting lower bill, uh, foot footage. Whereas those property owners that are not living here and aren't impacted by it, you know, every day, lifestyle wise. You know, and so I think that's where the balance comes in. Are we able to and willing to maybe work with those citizens that live here and are impacted by it all the time? So.
Well, Steve, let me ask you, let me ask this question, Steve. Um, the buildings in the area in question are authorized to go to 60 feet. How many stories typically at 60 feet?
Right.
Well, again, it's going to depend on a lot of things. What's the construction? Are they made it, building it out of wood or metal? Uh, steel girders? Are they having a 20-foot first level floor? Or are they all going to be 10? So it really is hard to say what it would be, but knowing that we're and, and throughout the whole downtown districts averaging out to 60 feet is still there. 40 feet for the general, 60 for Core B and 80 for Core A.
I think, so I think, but I, I guess my question, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's one of the main questions the survey needs to address because I can honestly tell you, I have not talked to a citizen yet that has a problem with an 80-foot building uh, by Harman's.
Well, because it's going to be against the freeway, right?
Exactly.
It would be back by the freeway.
Not like they're seeing it from their house.
Well, then here's, here's the question I need to ask, and, and I think it's, it's relative to this. In your estimation, Steve, how long has the authority to allow a 60-foot building, which we're going to assume to be five stories? Uh, just pick a number, it's five stories, six stories in an existence here in Roy?
Uh, well, without a shadow of a doubt, since 2005.
So we can say for the last 15 years, okay, uh, that ordinance has been in place. I think it's probably been longer, but let's use the 2005. In that period of time, uh, the question I would ask is, is how many requests have you received from developers? Property owners that says they wanted to raise their building up to say five stories?
From current developers, no one.
Nobody.
These again are built to what, you know, the footings and foundation and everything, how it's built, is built, constructed for what they've got.
Which is typically one story.
One or two stories. I mean, you can't all of a sudden throw five more stories on top of Harman's without having to go back underground and re-fortifying their footings, even though that is a 40-foot building.
Yeah.
Um, but do we know what Woodbury has in mind for what they're going to build? Because once you build over four stories, don't you have to have certain, you know, elevators or fire code restrictions and everything? Once you get past four stories, doesn't that change? Make it more expensive for builders to have elevators or whatever they have to do in order to have over four stories?
Oh.
Yeah, let me just address that a little bit. When we were talking with Woodbury initially about what they were looking at, uh, they indicated that they would probably be somewhere in the five to six-story area. However, the issue is, is that, and, and one of the things they've asked us to do is maybe go down and take a look at some of the apartments and developments they're doing in Orem to get a feel of what these newer apartments look like. But the one thing they did indicate to me was that they would be having probably bigger floor to ceiling uh, plates. So instead of a, a, a standard apartment that might have an eight or nine-foot ceiling, some of these could be 12 to 14 feet. So the idea is, is you may get a four-story building, but it might be 60 feet tall simply because of the ceiling height types of things that you have to work in. Most office buildings that are built require uh, at least a 20 to 21-foot ceiling. Uh, that's the floor plates you're looking at. So if you build a hundred thousand square foot building with 20,000 square foot floor plates, you're going to be at five, about five stories, but you could be bigger than the 60-foot height. So I, I think that when we talked about this, we talked more about feet than stories. Because you may not get, I, I think we're thinking about uh, uh, 60 feet is a five-story building. That may not be a five-story building. That might be a four-story building. Uh, or it, it might even be a three-story building. So I think that the feet is more appropriate to guide and not look at in the fact that, well, that means we're going to have uh, five or six or seven-story buildings. I, I really don't think we'll have a building bigger than for, probably that five, five-story if you look at it. So that's the comment, but they haven't put a drawing together. Uh, initially, they would like to had 100 feet. But uh, and, and, and some of the projects they built have been 100 feet, but they did, uh, we, the, the, the group agreed on 80 and I think 80 works in that core area, Core A area.
Because it's right against the freeway.
Yes, and, and it gets better exposure too.
And all them buildings aren't like a solid roll. There'll be a building and then you know, where you can see the mountains or whatever, and then there'll be a building and it won't be just like straight across, right?
Well, I, I don't know until I see that, to listen to their designs.
Hey, let me, we're going to run out of time here. Steve, you want to make a less comment?
But because you asked about the heights in our ordinance, in 1973 and 2004, uh, the height was subject to the city fire capabilities. So it'd be down to the fire code and what they would have to do, but they could go almost as tall as they wanted as long as the fire department signed off on it.
There you go. Okay. Hey, council, we made some good progress. We've got a couple of things done tonight. That's perfect.
Yeah.
Uh, we'd like to schedule, if it's okay with you, in our next city council meeting. Uh, that'll be the first, I believe, in December, Matt. Well, let's take an hour either before or after, and let's go ahead and continue. I've got some more questions. Uh, Dan will be back, we'll be able to address some of her questions. Uh, we left with the one you brought to the table, Brian, which is uh, discussion about 80 feet to 70 feet. Uh, we'll continue up that point when we meet again. Okay? Again, thanks. We got some good information. Is there any, anything else you'd like to talk about before we adjourn?
I appreciate this format. I think this is what we've been kind of looking forward to, and I think this will allow us to, to make the progress we need. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree. I think it's going to be great.
Perfect. Thank you. And I appreciate the input you had. Do I have a motion then to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Hey, Anne, had a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I had Anne motion to adjourn, is that correct, Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then Brian gave us a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, take three minutes, shift over to our new one and we'll be ready for our city council.